I'd like to welcome you here to the meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission. We'll open with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just a couple of housekeeping items this morning. There are listening devices available if you need one. Tyler's here to help you with that. Meeting documents are available down at the end next to Commissioner Karski. If you plan to speak during public comment today, there's a sign in back here by this door, and we would appreciate if you'd sign your name and your address, and then you won't have to identify yourself publicly or give your address publicly when you stand up for public comment. Just a reminder that if there's an item that anybody, any of the commissioners would like removed from the consent agenda, you just need to make that motion right prior to approving the consent agenda. And then just a reminder to everybody that we do have absentee voting next door, and that's why this door is not being used through the remainder of the voting season, and we'll be using this door over here. And we just asked that if you're out in the hallway that you try to keep the disruption to a minimum, and just recognizing that folks are utilizing their right to vote. I think that is it. With that said, I consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Move for approval, second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Next item is a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move for approval, second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Thunder.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. Next item, non-controversial resolutions. Oh, wait, never mind, sorry, that was part of the consent agenda. So that brings us to public comment. If there's anyone here today who'd like to speak, this is your opportunity. Good morning, how are you?
Cindy Meyer. Good. I find it very disappointing that our group continues to be discredited by members of this commission group. If you are thinking we are digging into election integrity for just a hobby, you are sadly mistaken. Last week, many of us told you how it was possible for machines to be connected to the Internet even though there was no cord. Yet the Minnehaha County Auditor told you they were not connected to the Internet, and you believe him. Where is his proof? Has he done the research, or is he just repeating to you what the company told him? I shared last week that the culprit may be in the USB drive being put into the machines to dump data on. After the meeting last week, a commissioner in another county in South Dakota that uses the same ESNS machines told me that the USB drive that gets put into the tabulating machines comes from the same company that sells the machines. I also found out that this USB drive is actually sent to a location in Minnesota to be programmed before it gets used. I also found out that the company programming the USB drive is the same company that prints our ballots. Isn't that interesting? Do you suppose that happens in Minnehaha County also? Do you suppose that's a question you should be asking? Another question you might want to ask is why do you need to program a thumb drive before you put it into a machine to dump data on it? Why would you have to do that? Don't you find that interesting? And yet you say there was no fraud, and our elections are the gold standard for elections. We present information, facts, and figures to you week after week after week. We have proof there were irregularities in the election, but just because Auditor says our elections are the gold standard for elections does not prove a thing. Where is your proof to support your claim? Why don't you prove to us there was no fraud in the 2020 election? Why can't we even get election integrity on the commission agenda so we can discuss it? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment this morning?
Is there anybody who can use the projector? Is it turned on? Please. Please. Okay, thank you. So mine also, my talk is about the election security, Teresa Pash, my talk is also about election security and the USB drives. But what I will start, since you started with that, I'll start with something different. So mine is about the Election Assistance Commission. So this is about money going specifically to South Dakota. No? It's coming. This is easier, this is easier to manage than the phone at least. Thank you. And so these are the difference over here, let's see, where it shows election security is the money given, the federal, the federal funding that was given to South Dakota through HAVA. And so it shows 2018 election security was $3 million, and 2020 was $3 million. And with the CARES Act in 2020, it was $3 million. So my question is, is with all that money going towards election security, is why isn't security more of a concern for Minnehaha County? Also, with my paperwork here, is that in 2014, there were two machines, in 2014, there were two machines that were paid for, the DS-850, the high-speed digital scanners. And so it looks like those two machines from 2014 and the machine from 2015, the DS-850, was paid for with county money. And as far as I can tell, 2020 was HAVA money due to the CARES Act, and that was the only one that I could see that was paid with federal funds. So that means that three machines at $111,000 each were paid with county money. So now I'm going to go on to see if this will come up. And so, so there is an article, and it talks about the thumb drives, which are also part of the DS-850, is when we get the machines, it includes three 8-gigabyte thumb drives for each machine. So with these thumb drives, I'm going to just read off some information from three different articles and see how far I get with time. So in the Atlanta area in 2020 for the presidential elections, 36 memory cards were removed in an Atlanta-area polling. So this has to do with the memory cards that are put in the machines could only hold so much information. So there's what they call a counting limit, so it's the capacity of the machines to only hold so much information. And the only reason that, what I'm going to say following, was found out is because a FOIA was set forth by a news agency. So the limit of the capacity is relative to the amount of information on each ballot. And it wasn't until October 26th that this Atlanta area was told that there would be a limit on the memory cards. So Fulton County spokeswoman stated that they performed capacity test, and actually the drives that they were told that would hold 10,000 bits of information was actually, 10,000 ballot information was actually only able to hold 5,000 ballots' worth of information. So with that said, is she real? Fulton County spokeswoman did her homework, and they tested, they found out that it was really only 5,000 ballots that could be fit on a memory card. But instead, they decided to swap out memory cards at 3,000 ballots.
Teresa, I think, oh, I'm sorry.
They swapped out memory cards 36 times during the voting period. And another one in Milwaukee, an executive director from the Milwaukee Commission, she made the mistake of leaving her memory card in one of the ballot tabulators, and then actually went back to the county courthouse with all the memory cards that she can get and forgot that she left one in a tabulator at a precinct. And one of the poll workers had to get the memory card and give it to a police officer for her, to bring to the county courthouse. So my point is, is that these memory cards that count the ballots, there's multiple memory cards. Who keeps track of them? Where is the chain of custody? And with so many memory, so much memory on each memory card, is there's more chances that things are going to go wrong.
Thank you, Teresa, your time's up. Thank you very much. All right.
Good morning. My name is Gary. I went to the movie 2,000 Mules documentary last night, and for those of you that are unfamiliar with it, a mule is somebody they classify as being paid to do something illegal. And they found 2,000 people, mules, that stuffed ballot boxes across the country with invalid ballots. Anybody that doesn't believe there's a possibility of corrupt evil forces working to control our elections should watch it. If you don't believe Big Brother, or evil forces for that matter, is watching, it will scare the pants off you. What our group of dedicated volunteering, volunteers is doing is feverishly trying to figure out if there was any malicious activity that occurred in South Dakota's 2020 election, and if so, prevent it from happening in the upcoming election. But the folks that control the evidence that would allow us to uncover the truth, the truth being either there was or there wasn't malicious activity, have thrown all that evidence behind the locked door and refused to allow us to access to prove guilt or innocence. There are thousands of patriots across this great nation that will be watching like hawks for any visible signs of fraud in the upcoming election. But unfortunately, what we can't watch is the invisible. The invisible activity is what's inside electronic voting equipment. Not even you, as public officials, are allowed to see the source code that runs inside these machines, because the company that sold it to you says it's proprietary. So the company that sells you the machines, sells you the software, sells you the test data, sells you the results of the test data, and sells you that special flash drive that you need to insert into the computer and on, controls the election. So even though your candidate may have won this time around, left unchecked, that may not be the case the next time around. A candidate, let's say, for example, by the name of Adolf Hitler, may win the election, and you will be powerless to question the results. Dean, if you or any other member of this commission, ever wants to put another magnet on your car that says "Vote for me," you need to speak up and say, "Let this group of patriots find out if we have holes in our election system that would allow for vote tampering." But until we either get to the source code or go back to paper ballots, our elections are in jeopardy. That should be a concern to all of us here, and that's what keeps our group trudging forward, again, against all odds and obstacles that are thrown in our way. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment? Good morning.
Good morning. Leah Anderson, Sioux Falls resident, and I am a candidate on the ballot.
I don't think you're allowed to, well, I don't know. Go ahead, sorry.
All right. I have some concerns and questions that I would like to clear up, and I would like to clear up some misinformation. In early April, I contacted Steve Barnett, our Secretary of State, and I asked him who oversees the auditor. I was curious about this because I was researching a law regarding the use of ballot drop boxes, and I felt that the use of the boxes was not legal. That law I refer to is 12-19-7. During that conversation, Steve said the auditor reports to the county commission so they would have oversight. Recently, each of you were emailed by a concerned citizen regarding the city election error, and that citizen was told that the commissioner, told by Commissioner Karski that the commissioners do not oversee the auditor. So I'm just curious, what is the correct answer? Thankfully, in regards to the drop boxes, through the work of this group, the canvassing group of South Dakota, the drop boxes were removed, and we are continuing to see that happen throughout the counties in our state. But my question still remains, who oversees the work of the auditor? My other reason for asking this is due to the fact that both Ben and myself are on the ballot. I am not allowed to work or volunteer at an election site, because I had applied to do that before I was on the ballot, and I was told that I can't. So who is overseeing Ben's role in the election and the voting process? So I would still like to know an answer to that question. Finally, the misinformation that I'd like to talk about is on April 19th, in the meeting here at the commission, Ben referred to himself as an elected official, and I believe that that is not correct, because he was appointed by you, the county commission. So that, again, brings up my question, who oversees the auditor? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment this morning? Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Bosman with the Sheriff's Office. Just giving a brief little snippet of information here that with the war in Ukraine that's still ongoing, there's been a strong need for equipment and supplies. Many organizations around the world have identified ways to help during this time of need. We've received a request from the National Sheriff's Association to all law enforcement agencies across the country, informing them that the Ukrainian-American Coordinating Council is helping gather donations of used body armor and helmets for the defenders of Ukraine. Our Sheriff's Office currently has 14 used ballistic vests and 27 used helmets that are able to be used in support of Ukrainian police and first responders. These items no longer have any monetary value to us due to them being over five years old, and standards require us to get new ones every five years, but they can still be used for a valuable purpose in Ukraine. We've established a partnership with the FedEx Shipping Company on South Louise by Barnes &amp; Noble, where they will generously box and ship all the items that we have at no cost to the county. These items are going to be shipped to a facility in New Jersey, where they will then be loaded on a ship and head to Ukraine. The export process and route has been approved by the U.S. Department of the State and the U.S. Department of Commerce. We hope that this small act of support that we can provide from the caring people of Minnehaha County, South Dakota, will provide some relief to the strong and courageous people of Ukraine. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll move to regular business. The first item is a presentation from Chief Judge Howman, Courts and Safety and Justice presentation, thank you.
Good morning. Robin Howman, presiding judge for the Second Judicial Circuit. I've been asked to provide a brief update on the work of the Safety and Justice Challenge through the MacArthur Foundation grants that we've received. And the way I wanted to present the information to you this morning was I went back to the presentation I gave back in 2020, when we were proposing that the commission adopt this next round of funding. So I proposed five goals at that time, and I thought I'd just update you on each of those five goals. The first goal was looking at work at our pre-arrest decision point. For a number of years, Minnehaha County has now had what we call a pre-trial services entity that works for our community and justice partners. Most recently, we've looked at updating the parameters of that work to determine what is most beneficial, not only for the judicial system, but for our community, what is working best for our pre-trial services. And we've identified that pre-trial services has been very successful. We've had a number of people placed on pre-trial services, in fact, so many, we were trying to figure out ways to identify how people could be moved off of pre-trial services once they establish that they're successful in making their court dates and not reoffending. So we've established some parameters on getting people off pre-trial services once they've demonstrated that they're being successful. And for those individuals who are not successful on pre-trial services, we've now established a method for bringing that to the attention of the court and for allowing the court to address those individuals who've not been successful while out on pre-trial services. We also finally have, in the works, traveled to Tucson, Arizona. It was something that we intended and actually had tickets purchased for April of 2020. Obviously, we were not able to go on that trip to Tucson, but a couple of other small groups have gone, and now our larger group is planning to go sometime, we hope, in November. Tucson, Arizona actually has a number of really exciting pre-trial efforts, and we'd like to go down, we'd like to learn about those efforts and determine what would be good for our community of the programs that they have. The second goal we had was case processing efficiency. That's how quickly we're getting cases processed through the justice system here in Minnehaha County. Pre-trial is also a part of our pre-trial case processing, processing efficiency, but we're also participating now in a workshop through the MacArthur Foundation called the Case Pro Network, where the judicial system, the state's attorney's office, and our two public defense offices are participating in some workshops to see what is going on in other states and other jurisdictions, to see if we can process our cases more efficiently. Is there something that they're doing that we're not even aware of that we could bring to Minnehaha County to process cases quicker? We're also planning what's called another stress test. We did a stress test in 2019 that looked specifically at a host of cases that moved through our system. We identified where there were some gaps, where there were some delays, and what we could do is adjust the system to more efficiently, more efficiently process those cases, and we're going to do another stress test sometime this summer to see if we can update, again, those processes and procedures. The third goal that we had was in substance use disorders and mental health. Obviously, triage was a large part of meeting that goal. At the time I presented this project to the commission, we had also applied for a COSAP grant. Our community has already received that COSAP grant, and that is providing for some diversion efforts in the Minnehaha County State's Attorney's Office, and also some housing solutions for a number of people. Our fourth goal was to maintain COVID-19 changes. One of those goals was remote court appearances, and since the time of the original grant here, although not funded by the grant, the unified judicial system has indeed agreed that remote court appearances can be quite beneficial, and we have now wired eight courtrooms in the Minnehaha County courthouse for permanent Zoom installations to allow individuals, and in fact, judges on some occasions, to appear remotely for court appearances. The unified judicial system also established a Find a Court Date link on our website, where any individual in the state of South Dakota can enter their full name and their date of birth and find out when their court dates are. That's one of the efforts that we've made to reduce failures to appear. And we're also in the initial discussions of adding court time outside regular business hours to address the failures to appear that we have seen. There is a successful program that has been operational in Tucson for a number of years, and we're trying to dig down and see what of that program might fit here in Minnehaha County. And as far as outstanding warrants, as of April 14th, there were 16,394 outstanding warrants in Minnehaha County. Out of those warrants, about 2,800 were for felonies, and so we're hoping that identifying a program such as one outside of regular court hours would allow us to reduce those outstanding warrants. And then our final goal of the SJC was racial and ethnic fairness. And building on those efforts, we recently held a community engagement conference that was on March 17th. We believe that that conference was very successful, and we have plans for another one later this fall. We have a Native American artist who is designing a piece that we'll place in the courthouse, and there's one also going in the link. Through these SJC funds, we've also provided funding to Urban Indian Health to provide cultural programming, mentorship, and treatment for individuals seeking services there. We've also funded three cohorts of the Leaders of Tomorrow Program for Justice Impacted. We also have six training programs that are planned. Three of those training programs, we've identified the languages most spoken outside of Spanish in the Minnehaha County courthouse, and we're going to provide training for justice partners on what those languages, what the culture of those languages is, to help inform us when we're meeting those individuals in the justice system. And the other three of the six programs are under development. Finally, we have four community events planned this summer. We're just waiting on final confirmation from the Special Events Group with the city, but we hope to have events at Meldrum Park on June 23rd, Granite Valley Park on July 7th, Emerson Park on August 2nd, and Hayward Park in conjunction with their ribbon cutting. And those are planned to be community events within those communities to hopefully draw the people who live in those areas together to provide food. I think law enforcement will be there to assist with some fun, and we hope that these can provide some great benefit to our community.
Thank you. Questions? Judge Howman? So I'm just super curious, what are the top three languages besides Spanish?
Oh, I should have written that down.
Oh, that's okay. Didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Arabic, Noir, or Teringa, and I can get you that information. I should know that. We, during COVID, when we had different restrictions in the courthouse, we had it posted on the front door in all four of the top spoken languages, and I wish I could remember that for you today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I don't have any questions. I just have a comment. It's been pretty impressive to see, I guess, the procedures and policies that you've been able to adopt and move people through the system during COVID with all the other options that you have provided through some of the grants that you've received, and it's amazing to see people make changes like that during a very difficult time.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Great leadership.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for being with us this morning. All right, that takes us to item 11. We will consider a motion to issue a proclamation declaring May 6, 2022, as Child Care Provider Appreciation Day. Heidi here. Hi, Heidi.
Hi. I'm Heidi Fink, Director of Blue Dragon Academy in Garrettson, South Dakota. The Child Care Appreciation Day is May 6, 2022, whereas Child Care Aware of America and other organizations nationwide are recognizing child care providers on this day, and whereas over half the children under the age of six nationwide are estimated to spend some time in a non-parental care arrangement on a weekly basis, which provides critical enrichment opportunities and nurtures development for children of all backgrounds as a vital building block of our country and economy. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has created tremendous hardships for child care providers and the families who depend on them, who have continued to meet the needs of families while risking their health and financial stability to remain open, and whereas our future depends on the quality of early childhood experiences provided to young children today. Support for high-quality child care represents a worthy commitment to our children's future. Now, therefore, it be resolved that Minnehaha County Commission declares May 6, 2022, to be Provider Appreciation Day in Minnehaha County, and urge all citizens to recognize child care providers for their important work.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Consider a motion.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for coming this morning. Thank you. That takes us to item 12, which would be to authorize the chair to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and Canfield for furniture in the treasurer's office. I believe treasurer wasn't able to be with us today, so Tyler, hi.
Correct, Tyler Clatt, Commission Office, yes. Treasurer Spottson was unable to attend, so you get, I'll call myself the B Team. The request for you, as discussed at our last meeting, is to authorize the chair to sign an agreement between the county and Canfield for the final cost of furniture. A little bit of background, the reason all of this is coming forward is as part of the study done by Dr. Tracy last summer, he identified an easy way to kind of improve efficiency within the office is to rearrange the internal structure to improve how people work, where they're supposed to be, making things a lot easier. The furniture itself was budgeted in the 2022 budget for $78,000. As we, as the treasurer mentioned last time, we found out earlier, about two weeks ago, that the price was going to jump about 8% if we didn't move a little bit faster on it. The final bill came in at $89,583. That puts the treasurer around $11,000 over on that line item. The other thing to consider in this project overall is that the construction that will need to take place to facilitate some of this movement will be approximately $20,000. We don't know that final number quite yet. $20,000. We don't know the final number quite yet. But like I said, the ultimate final ask for you is to authorize the chair to sign that agreement so that we can order that furniture.
Questions for Tyler? I just would have one point of clarification. The $20,000 that you referenced is not actually coming out of the treasurer's budget. That's coming out of the building fund. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
And there was money budget, or there is money available for that portion of the project?
That's how I understand it, yeah.
Any other questions? I know we had an opportunity to visit about this a little bit at our meeting, end of our meeting last week. If there are no questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to approve the funding for the furniture from Canfield?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. That takes us to item 13, which is a first reading for rezoning number 22-01, and to authorize the auditor to publish a notice of hearing on May 24th. I think we have Mason. Good morning, Mason.
Good morning, Commissioners. As described, this is the first reading for rezoning 2201, which is a request to rezone 15.03 acres from the A1 Agricultural District to the C Commercial District. These parcels are located at the northwest corner of Renner Corner on South Dakota Highway 115, in an area where there are other commercial developed properties. The item was heard by the Planning Commission on April 25th, and they voted unanimously to approve, to recommend approval of the rezoning request. Now that that request was heard by the Planning Commission, it needs to be heard in front of the county board with public hearing and final action. Staff is requesting that hearing date be set for May 24th, 2022. So we, the action requested is to authorize the auditor to publish notice of hearing, of a public hearing on an amendment to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County that will be held on May 24th, 2022, at 9:00 a.m. at a meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission. If there are any questions, I will take them.
Questions for Mason? Commissioner Karski?
I guess the only thing I'd like to see at that next meeting, at the second reading, is the flood maps and if there's any proposed changes, because I think that there are some things in the air and what the impact could be. So I'd like to see that.
Yes. The PowerPoint I have set for that meeting will show that, and the petitioner has submitted documents showing that they will be above that, a new flood plan for FEMA.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, I'd entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to authorize the auditor to publish notice on May 24th of rezoning 22-01. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that takes us to item 14, which is a briefing to consider a moratorium on pipelines in Minnehaha County. Tyler?
Good morning, Tyler Clack, Commission Office. As has grown in the development of pipelines for transmitting hazardous gases or liquids, it's becoming more prudent to consider how a regulatory framework would safely address this infrastructure. As an option, the commission could consider implementing a moratorium, allowing for the purpose to draft an ordinance to develop an appropriate method to safely regulate these sorts of pipelines. So at this point, we just wanted to offer that up to you and to provide some direction, if you have any, into that matter.
This is another item we had an opportunity to visit about a little bit, several meetings, but particularly, most recently, last week. Commissioner Karski?
You know, I'm interested in the moratorium, but I personally feel that it needs to be no more than a year, because there's just, going two years creates just an extra year of uncertainty and people wondering what's going to be decided. If we're going to do a moratorium, I think it's a good idea. I think it needs to be a year. And then, why do we have a moratorium, I guess is the question. It's not just to have a moratorium, but to truly dig into the issues of hazardous pipelines and what are the setbacks that are currently exist? Are they adequate? What are the depths of pipelines? What are the, maybe the type of pipeline, you know, should it have a pipe wall of 3/4 of an inch or whatever? You know, just different things that need to be considered. And I believe we're going to burden our planning department with this task of kind of putting ideas together. So when we talk about a moratorium, that's what I would like to see and have it brought at our next commission meeting, so that it lasts for a year. That's my idea. I mean, that would certainly be open to public input and comment at the next meeting. But that's where I'm sitting with it.
Go ahead. Commissioner Bennega, sorry.
I would definitely agree with Commissioner Karski's analogy. Depth is important of the pipeline, distance from certain businesses and public entities, obviously residents part of that process. The other thing I'd like to have considered is some fire training-related issues and how we can address some of those concerns that we've heard from rural fire departments and all those kinds of things. So that piece is new, so to speak, in the conversation, but I would encourage us to consider that. I'd be happy to listen to how long the moratorium should be in place. I think that's something that's important to the public to be involved with, so be actually thrilled to have that brought up to the group.
I think you have your direction. I mean, as I stated last week, I'd be in support of this as well. I think that one year provides us a reasonable amount of time to, you know, look at this issue in some depth with the idea that, you know, if something unexpected happened, this commission, as it is constituted at the time, could take a different action or extend that if they needed to. But I really think one year would probably give us the time that we need to really try to develop some expertise. I don't think any of us sitting up here pretend to be experts in the matter. So, does, you need anything further from us at this time? Okay, thank you very much. All right. That takes us to commission, Commissioner Liaison Reports. Any Commissioner Liaison Reports this morning? Only thing I would mention is that department heads know that budgets are due on May 13th, I believe. And so, I know I've been, I've been, my department heads that I'm liaison for have been reaching out, and it will make for a busy week, probably next week, trying to meet with them. But I would encourage any of the commissioners who have not already heard from their elected officials or department heads to reach out to try to schedule a meeting to go over the budget they intend to submit. Anything else? Commissioner Karski?
We did have a LINK Board meeting last week, and at our May joint meeting with the city council, I believe May 24th is the day, or close anyway, there will be a presentation by the executive director of the LINK, and we will hear more about, kind of how the first 11 months have gone, I guess. So things are exciting, and I think going the way that we want them to go with what's happening there.
Chairman, if I can follow up to Commissioner Karski's comments. Carol Muller, Commission Office, just saw this morning that we have no planning items for May 24th. And I don't know if Scott is still down here, your internet, correct? So no need, there's, we won't be meeting for anything.
Okay.
If I can, is there a direction from the commission that they would like to meet just for that item? Typically, we haven't done that in the past.
You know, there's nothing that's real-time critical. It's an informational thing, from my perspective as a board member for the LINK. And we will have plenty of meeting opportunities coming up in June and July, especially with annual presentations by others that are done and board, and budget hearings and that type of thing. So I'd prefer to wait if we have nothing for May 24th. That'd wait.
Thank you. I appreciate the direction. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anything else? Commissioner Bennega?
I would just say that yesterday was our first meeting of the Fair Board and the community activity for potential possibilities, if you will, on what happens with fairground future issues. And today at noon, I believe, there's another continuation of that conversation. And this afternoon at 4:00, they will summarize a piece of that process. The process is supposed to last about six months. So if anybody's interested, they'd be encouraged to attend.
Tyler?
One more thing. Just a reminder, next Tuesday, there's no regular meeting in here, but we have the countywide bus tour hosted by the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance. I don't have the agenda in front of me, but just as a reminder that that's next week.
All right. Thank you. Anything else? All right. Then that'd take us to non-action commission discussion. Anything on that item? I don't believe so. So then we can, there's no exec today, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, for coming this morning.